...to order at seven thirteen, October twenty-third. And we have, hang on while I get to particularity of this, sorry. Voluntary transfer. So we just voted, you didn't know, so thank you all so much for that. A lot of work that went into that. And want to talk about some of the process procedures we're going to be taking at current?
Well, I said most of my piece, I guess. The, as we discussed in our last session, when we were sort of hammering out exceptions and whatnot, I think there was a pretty good consensus that the, having a good reason to have the exception, right? And one of the reasons was, you know, it's helping us meet our goals, right? That's a pretty good one. And we brought up the staff exception. We're talking about moving to somewhere else, but it still had a reason to keep it. Took it out of here, gonna have it with someone else. The Scanlon Farms thing specifically, and then other things that would come up like it. The benefit, I guess the argument for what the benefit is, is to reduce the number of transitions kids would make, right? If I get it right. This one particularly was predicated on the fact that everybody's assuming that there's gonna be another elementary school built sometime soon. And I would, I don't know that that's gonna happen.
And not even soon as much as at some point while those kids are in school.
While those kids are in school, right?
Yeah, cuz that was a big one. Is I, it was one of those sheets that I printed from an earlier PowerPoint that we had from way back when. If I can find it, but that we looked specifically at, if you were a kindergartner and you were moving, how many moves might you have over the life of those changes? So I think that was part of that, and that's one of the reasons that the board hadn't necessarily, and that's the chart if you remember from that PowerPoint. How many moves might you face theoretically if there is a, if a Scanlon Farms elementary school is built at some point in time going out as far as 2023?
I think there's two things, like, so I'm with you on that because if you remember, I sat here and said, I promised people in Windsor Ridge that there would be a school there that never got built until Hoover got built, right? And actually, we sold the land where the school was supposed to be built.
Yeah, we did.
There's houses there. So I was cautious of that happening.
Not we.
We, this district.
The four, yes.
Yes. Of that happening again, but also these students, I think, were originally, that's where Grant was going to be built, and then we decided to move it. So I think that played into it, which is a little bit different, but I share your concern, who I said before.
I guess maybe that's what I would, but I don't know how you quantify it into verbiage on how you update the stock, but it's always, it's kind of how operate, right? If you have in mind of the end game, like, what is the, the impact of doing it? The positive impact of doing it? Does it outweigh the negative impact of doing it, right? Because obviously, we discussed, right? Any voluntary transfer makes everything easier. You just wipe this like clean and it's just not there, right? So there is a negative impact of letting any of it happen, but it's very positive that outweighs it. And if that's the thought process, or to go through each thing that pops up, you probably will have good results from it. I just think it's going to be a bit more subjective in these types of cases, right? Because, you know, Steve used the word, people had expectations, they, well, they've got expectations with the 2019. Potentially have changed some of those, right? So then every one of them could have that argument, well, then you should let me stay at my school, or let me stay at the one you're telling me I'm going to in 2019, which may be different than the one they're at now, right? So it gets real, might be real fast, you know, some sort of context to how we're gonna handle this, right?
What's important?
So what's important to my head as you're talking, Sean, is, you know, maybe we just have a process by which whenever we vote to make boundary changes, we must, well, get voluntary transfer forms and move exceptions to kind of walk our way through. Are there anything, any additional exceptions we need to add based on minimizing moves or, you know, anything, whatever? But it's just, they just go hand in hand. Whenever we make a boundary change, we look at voluntary transfer forms, see other any adjustments, like, give them the necessary.
And I think one of the things that goes along with that is, and if you decide not to, then you can tell them right away. And I think that, that's one of the other things that was a challenge with this one. I know when we as a team went back and looked at it, it's like, okay, a decision was made here. We told them we'd get back to them, we haven't gotten back to them. A period of time has passed. They had some expectations that there were going to be some issues that were dealt with, they haven't been dealt with. Do we provide them that grandfather opportunity because we simply, as a, as an entity, didn't address that issue maybe as timely as we could have?
Maybe we just always do these two things together, that we communicate together.
That's what I would recommend.
Or the counterargument is you take the hard line on it, and moving forward is, don't do anything like that.
You know, well, for me, it's just because, like, that conversation we were literally having with people in, like, this hall. And so to me, it makes it a little harder just to say, we took you through a whole process, and two months later, geez, as opposed to, you know, the next, like you said, the next time you do it, you just tell them upfront, you know, this is what it is, and this is the answer policy. Because I know that, you know, as they were, you know, we were working on the grant boundaries, where that came from, this. So that to me, it would just be harder to not have that exception, just because it's like, we just told you this, and we just took you through a whole process and talked about this, and now just a couple of months later, we're changing. Even though we did tell them, hey, it's subject to change, I, to me, that's, it would be hard to take the hard line. I almost would have rather, if we're gonna have a hard line, take the hard line and, and I don't know, not do it, just later, you know, I don't know. But I don't know how.
The easiest way, right, is take the hard line, right? Because then that's what you call back, you know, like, we're just not gonna do it anymore. I would disagree that it's a couple of months later. I mean, it was almost a year ago that we figured out we were doing a grant, and we tabled this discussion indefinitely until now, right? So those folks didn't have an answer for a year, right? Did they have an answer? So I don't know that they just got a new answer, they just got their first answer.
I still think if we combine these conversations, and we're looking at that new boundary changes, we're going to look at the voluntary transfer form, we may choose to say, we're staying, not making any changes, take the hard line. But at least we've been intentional about it and considered the new circumstances, and we can communicate to community to go get their input on it as well. And we've got a good intentional, thought-through decision, and it's, I don't know.
I also think it might be good just to have this discussion at the same time that you, we get presented with the official enrollment numbers every year because then it's going to affect that graph on the bottom that they change and when they decide what we need to change there, so.
Someday we may have to have an equity transfer session. I'm just saying. Okay, you guys look at me like I'm a hopeless idealist that.
We'll work towards that. He's right, but I, I don't know if it will be in, put on people multiple terms, so.
So to Sean's point, it would be hopeful for me if I just had clarification on what our main intention is with that clause. Because I hear two things. I hear we're concerned about the multiple moves, but on your chart where you counted moves, like you counted going out to Hoover, and, you know, that's a move. So, you know, that's where you got to that medium, that group of moves. Whereas the question of, they were expecting this and we changed it.
Right.
Those are two different issues.
Well, and you remember, we had a long conversation with the parents because initially I didn't count the move to Hoover because the entire school was moving out there. So your teachers, your custodians, your food service, your principal, the secretary, everybody was moving out there. And parents came to those meetings and were pretty adamant that I needed to count that as a move because it was a disruption of their learning environment, so we added that in there. But I think that, that gives us that opportunity to have a pretty candid conversation about it right there at the time.
Is the purpose of the clause vote, or is it that we're trying to minimize the number of moves that are in short periods of time? Or again, or is it the expectation issue of, you told me this in 2016, now you're telling me something in 2018?
I think it's a combination of all of it. I think it's them telling us too many moves and us telling them, we'll get you an answer, and we didn't get an answer right away.
What I'm getting at is we're setting a precedent. And I'm just trying to understand what a precedent is exactly.
So I would argue that we could get away from a lot of that precedent just by tightening up our decision-making process because that takes a large load off right there. If we have that conversation, if when we set up new attendance areas, we invite the parents in, we have that conversation with them, maybe it's a tough conversation with them, we have that conversation with them when we make a decision, I think it's a lot cleaner at that point in time because the expectation is, we're opening a new school, you're going to school there, moving on.
Hopefully, I think, you know, equity transfers, I, you know, I think we're probably, more to stick with that, we're around for a while because I think, you know, we're gonna have some gap. But if we sort of get, because, I mean, I guess that's a historical thing, before Mill Chalow behind this wasn't even a thing. And then we were forced to do this, and then families got used to it. And it was really that that started this whole, like, your school in need of assistance, and that's what started this whole, like, that's a bad school, I'm not going there. And we, as a district, and not this board, decided to maintain that. Because we could have got rid of it if Mill Chalow behind it went away completely. And I think, my guess would be, most districts don't do this. And so, so hope, you know, as we sort of move forward, maybe, hopefully, just get some people's minds, like, this isn't even an option. And if you're somebody who's, you know, going through the system or you're not in it yet, you don't even think about voluntary transfers except for maybe, you know, these narrow, you know, good, good cause, you know, real solid reasons or equity that's working towards our goals. So that's what I hope to say. You know, we saw when we went to year to year, we saw about my half, my guess, now we're gonna see very large dip. And so that, that's kind of my hope with the community is that eventually it's not an expectation, like, that whole idea of voluntary transfer.
You know, as an analytical guy, I like quantifyable things, right? And that's, I, I like the way they've drawn up the equity transfer, like, I mean, it's based on hard numbers. It's what the school looks like, you wanna make that look better, you can do that, right? And we've got a hard number to tell us that. I think to Lori's point, if we want to have the exception that minimizes the number of movements, quantify it, right? The exception is less than, you know, no more than three moves in a four-year span, or whatever number you want. If you quantify that, and maybe explicitly, say if you're moving to a temporary school, or you're just being remodelled for the first time.
Doesn't help.
I don't like, but then, you know, if that's quantifiable, then it's easier to say, this is what it is, you're only moving twice, you don't need that. Like I said, maybe, we don't need to solve that problem now, but I think that would be a tactic to look at some of that stuff, right? Because no matter what we do, if we do boundary changes at all, right, or pairing, or whatever else we, that's a move that we're adding. Depending on how all of those other steps play out, it could be key with. I think the fact that we were moving kids over to Hoover for the last couple of years definitely exacerbated the situation, right? And I will say that some people use the move from Hoover judiciously as whether they were considering it a Hoover map. They usually use the going to Hoover as one, and if they were coming back to a different school, they counted it. If they were coming back to their previous school, they did not count it, even though it's still moving from a school to a school, so.
And actually, you might move back with different students than you came with.
As an exception, so hopefully, we're not doing that kind of thing a whole lot here.
Yeah, hold on, that's, hopefully, the need isn't, yeah, we aren't.
Right.
But I guess that'd be what I'd, we're gonna, let's not introduce multiple movements with the steps you're doing there. Or if we are, we can kind of quantify this to what's acceptable.
I'm really kind of changing the topic a little bit. I'm curious what our communication plan is for this, because it's a big change.
I think we need to do it as part of the entire communication plan, when it's been maps, and also the look up and voluntary transfer, and the ASB, and transportation. So as soon as we can get all of our decks in the room, including full look up and all those pieces together, if we just have kind of a line page summary of what's going on, that's either follow and understand the timeline that they need to abide by, whether it's voluntary transfers, everything, and what is the inventory bussing, application, do they, everything.
Because if we just go out with this one, you know, this is gonna beg with a bunch of other questions everyone can answer soon, you know, deciding on this stuff. Is that, you know, is this a general, just a basic part of the plan?
So that'll be communicated approximately when? I'd love for that to happen December, I don't, I don't know if that can happen in June. January might happen, so we have to wait this.
December.
December.
So nothing better, I mean, which is, this is a case.
So when we hit through the boundary discussion, if, if I'm just, just kind of trying to close a lead on that voluntary transfer, we'll take a look at voluntary transfer form, except we're gonna place in the check whether we need to make any adjustments based on the boundaries, right? And to be intentional about that process, and then make that decision so that it can be issued.
I couldn't say it at the tail, but I agree with Lori, and you just probably agree too, that I think this one year, once we land on the boundary changes, I think it'd be important to change those numbers, but then every year after that, I think using the certified rule, I think it'd be fine, but I think it does need a one-time, special circumstance because those numbers hopefully are not a change dramatically.
Well, and especially, which side of the line, you know, that's.
Right.
Okay, anything else on voluntary transfers? So now we need to begin a whole lot's discussion. So I don't wanna pose any detailed questions, who wants to start?
Sure, Paul, now.
Yeah, I agree.
I'll go first, I don't have a lot, so I can get them out of the way. I mentioned talking about staffing and the secondary stuff, I think it needs to be part of our conversation, but I think we need to at least understand what we're trying to do first, so that's not what I'm looking for. But the handful of thoughts that kind of popped in my head, I think Laura mentioned, we've got a couple of schools that end up being pretty small, right? And you mentioned the feedback you got from the Hills folks talking about the economy of scale, like, it was terminology.
Oh, yeah.
What they can or can't do, so that would be a concern, that two schools, one that has an even smaller number of Hills. And then Shimick is right about that same number, right? I'm not, I totally am supportive of the fact that we've put those, the four or five kids back at Man. I think that was the right thing to do. I look at the Lincoln number now as a place, potentially it can take some more kids. It's not a, it's not a good long-term number, and I'm not suggesting that we even do it as part of this process either, but I think we definitely need to look at that moving forward because a number that's small does cause problems. And, you know, it, maybe it forces the issue of, you know, pairing for economic reasons as opposed to demographic balance because it's so small. But it's a, it's something that at least, you know, we'll look at as a move forward for both Shimick and Lakeland, just the size of them is concerning.
Hey Sean, before you, is it, I don't want you to ask the next question, I wanted to add on to that part. So I thought about this a lot after the meeting on Tuesday, because I think this kind of brought up, maybe utilized in some of our schools. And to me, I think that also offers us some opportunities. You know, if we actually wanted to, to say, go after a magnet style school, we need to have space for kids to move into, which has been a hang-up, I think, in the past, and that allows us things like that. If we maybe wanna look at adding more preschool and having full-time preschool, and you have a space like Shimick that hasn't undergone their improvements yet, that you could maybe look at adding true pre-K classrooms onto there and having some full space, you know, full-time space there, students there. Also, I think Lakeland is a unique place like Man where it really is kind of the central, it's hard to get to, but it's a centrally located school, which may be able to draw from everywhere versus some of our outlier schools.
That's a, that's a great point. And as you were saying that, I was also thinking that the, the community around Lincoln is not growing, that it's going to also fill Lincoln up, right? Like that would be a, a good idea to get people to, so, yeah, that's a good way to think of it. And I do think it is more of a long-term solution because, you know, when you, when you have numbers that are that small, one year to the next can change it quite a bit, right? So it could be bouncing around a little bit, so finding some long-term ideas that give us that space.
And I don't disagree with you, Paul, at all. I'm gonna add to what you're saying that, I think that as we've talked about magnet schools, sometimes we've talked about them being in places where we can't, where we don't have other solutions because of the population that is around the school. That would not be the case for either Shimick or Lincoln. So I just think we want to be cognizant of that, like, what students are gonna be going there as, for a magnet.
I guess it depends on what magnet you choose.
Well, absolutely, but, but socioeconomic status-wise.
Could you use your equity balance process as part of that transfer into the magnet, as part of the application process?
And I completely agree, the question is, can they get there?
Yeah.
So if we do a magnet in a spot that's, you know, already surrounded by a non, you know, low SES area, then.
And I know this is not what you want to talk about, but, you know, one of the things to look at is, when you look at the map, could you shift students in there from a neighboring attendance area that would then create that space in that school, which might then provide room for it? So as you look, you know, behind Ruthen and you look at where Lincoln is, for instance, or you look at where Shimick is, could you push your Man population into Shimick, thus freeing up the seats at Man instead of having the seats at Shimick? Could you push your Corvo Central or your Horn population into Lincoln, thus freeing up the seats at Corvo Central or Horn for the magnet? So that might be something you want to look at. I know you're trying to not push all the boundary rounds right now, but that.
And one of the things with, when we get into the magnet discussion is, you know, public transportation, how accessible it is that way, bus routes.
So your Man, your Horn, your Corvo Central are much better located.
And we're gonna have a fourteen million dollar school that's gonna be empty, that's has from zero to a half a mile, nine hundred and twenty-some kids surrounding it, that's old Hoover. For me, you want a magnet, that's your magnet. It's centrally located, it's on the bus line, right? That's, that's something that should be in, in the mix talking. Yes, on, for our smaller schools, pairing is going to really help with the operational efficiency. We were talking about that for months, but that, that'll help. And the tough one with Hills, and JP had, had an idea on, on something there, you know, that, that might help with that, with that community in that location because that school is, is everything to that, to that town. And that's why the mayor and everybody wants to be with us in January and discuss those things, and they're, they're in it for the long run, and, and we should be as well.
I think those conversations will help, that particular conversation is gonna help drive that next FMP talk. This Hills is gonna have to be in that, and my guess is they, they're gonna want things if we're gonna want to put it in an FMP. And, and I think that goes along with the magnet, is a really nice conversation we're having as we develop an FMP because if we do need some structural things, then that could be potentially, you know, part of that, so it's.
And then just one other program that I forgot, and I was thinking of. When you said Shimick, Shimick was one of the schools, and there's been some discussion of maybe moving the homeschool assistance program to Shimick, we're putting them in the, the tenplex. You may not have to use that if you had space inside the building, that could be space for.
Right now, I wanna be in the building.
Go ahead, yes, okay, now we're.
But that's an example of special programming. And there were the other examples of that, where you could move them out of Warlock, for example, and into Shimick. But that doesn't fix the problem of the inefficiency of the school. That just gets bodies in the building, if it doesn't solve the class size issue.
Yes, and the old school moving out of track and possibly doing something else with that space that may gain some efficiency by not having that space.
And I'm gonna move on to two things. One, much like I had the concern with, with, prior to this, this update with Lincoln and Man, you know, Man's FRL was pretty low, and, and the percent capacity usage was also really low. And I think we need to have this kind of inverse relationship with the FRL versus capacity in order to be the most, you know, efficient with our space. In this case, I'm a little concerned of Horn in the other direction with the capacity being over, it's over ninety percent, right? With a number over fifty percent on the FRL, so those two together are a little scary. I did try and look, it's hard on these maps to try and look at what you would carve out, and I was struggling of doing anything other than carving out pieces from Horn that are closer to Horn, which I didn't think was the best thing to do. So if there was some opportunities to look at that one specifically, I'd be, I'd be happier if that, that capacity number was down there a little bit. Just, you know, those two numbers together, I think, are important. And then the other question I have, and I guess maybe it's speculation, or maybe you can have concrete answer, is the significant drop in the SES number, or the low SES number at Penn, is that due mostly to our boundary change, or mostly to not having voluntary transfer? Because it, that, that change is significantly different than when we looked at it.
Some of both, some of both. Big chunk of it is map issue, so just a reminder, when we went through that process, the map up here looks not straight line, right? So we took, when we went up here and down here, it was a straight line before. Part of that was to try to get the grant low SES number better when compared to the district as a whole, because otherwise it was a real outlier, very low single digit, so we moved this neighborhood in, down here. This neighborhood was a lower, low SES neighborhood than this one. So as soon as we moved this one out of Penn and this one in, that pushed that number in the other direction, and made it lower. And then the other part of it is Penn, because it's proximity to Garner and Van Allen, there's a whole bunch of voluntary transfers. So with the NMBAG in, also then exacerbated.
I just remember when we, when we made those two little chunks.
Yep.
With that little thing.
It made them closer.
They were, they were better, and then all of a sudden, now it's coming up with.
So the voluntary transfer, there's just enough going down and back to Garner.
There's enough high SES kids that have voluntarily transferred out of Penn and into Garner and Van Allen that when we return them, that pushes that number down.
That means southern border. Southern side of that.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, I suppose it's worth it. Would you then change?
Keep in mind, you know, you had Penn up there and you didn't have Van Allen or Garner up there. And so as those schools grew in, you had some voluntarily transferred coming out and some coming in. But as Penn got more and more crowded, you saw more and more voluntary transfer go out of Penn and go into Garner and, and Van Allen, so.
Because Garner had so much space, because.
No, before, I mean, when it first opened up, Penn was really crowded, Garner and Van Allen, not so much. So you had some people that were going south to try to get a smaller school. They're now back, they've been returned.
And I guess I would ask, but it's always been a thing, right, voluntary transfer, that there had to be space there?
Yes, but then we often.
It's like, none of the North Liberty schools could have people going around.
Right, but we allowed siblings to follow. So we had a lot of long-term families that were bootstrapping their kids through the schools.
This is all a great example of why I would need to integrate this policy, because it can just create, how do you, yeah, how can we base anything on? How do you, yeah, how can we base anything on this shifting sand?
Now, I know we get our enrollment later on, but the numbers that were that you're projecting out, do they reflect anything with the numbers this year as far as projections and things like that? As far as, because I have heard that we're below what projections were.
Yep. So if you look at the, actually, am I looking at my screen? Sorry, go ahead. If you look at, if you remember when we met a couple of weeks ago, these numbers.
I can't read that.
I can't read that either. All right. If you remember a couple of weeks ago, when we were looking at these, these were seventeen, eighteen numbers. And we now have eighteen, nineteen numbers. So when we got the eighteen, nineteen numbers, we were then able to take them and move them as live-ins into these numbers. So where the old numbers reflected our seventeen, eighteen numbers, these new numbers all now reflect eighteen, nineteen. So this is eighteen, nineteen in the schools, and this is eighteen, nineteen for the live-in as we roll them forward.
And the, did we encounter this year? Do you anticipate?
We've we've actually talked to, we were planning, we do a two-year cycle with the demographers anyway. And the plan was to have them come back in and get ready to do that next round. I think that's even more important now than ever to have them do that. So make sure that whether it's changing P and G or the auto plants, auto part plant that shut down, but to figure out if that truly has an impact on us, or if that's anomalous, what that means.
Is it, not that we're getting smaller, just didn't grow as fast as we were?
Did not grow as fast as we thought we would this year.
By how? What do we think?
About a hundred kids, less than we thought we'd see.
And the budget was built around?
Always is built around per pupil.
Just a hundred?
I, well, I'd have to go back and look and see what the projection is, because I've got five different projection numbers in front of me right now. We did, if you want to find a bright spot in there, we retain, we have a net growth in our open enrollment gap. So if fewer kids leave and more kids stay, that's a good sign.
Yeah, I mean, I'd let people talk about any specific, a lot of people want to talk about that. I think the staffing thing is covered. And I think it's important that everybody knows that that is a thing that is being thought of, and as, you know, that happens every year anyway, right, there's a look at enrollment number, but.
Maybe one thing that.
I think you might have to see more shifting of staff from one school to another if we do significant number changes.
And our building principals have been talking to our staff about that, so that they, that's part of their mindset right now. The idea that if we know we are losing kids, especially through the transition in these attendance areas, if, given those numbers alone, not the changes in these numbers here, but just looking at those numbers, we knew we were gonna be up or down, we knew we were gonna gain or receive or lose staff. That's something that, and JP, I'm sure you remember this, you know, that's that's something that staff are really cognizant of. And so the administrators have had those conversations, because now as we get closer to the end of the calendar year, they'll start asking about what's the process? What's the process to staff New Hoover? What's the process to staff Grant? How does that timeline unfold? What happens to the seats that then become open behind them as people move into those? And then what's the domino effect as we go through that process and eventually get to the point where we're openly posting for positions?
I said we're gonna open, I was gonna throw some turmoil into it anyway, right? Pulling significant number of students out of a couple of elementarys, so that that was already gonna.
Yeah, and they wind up being a little bit different, because with, as with Alexander opening up, a Borlaug opening up was more like the New Hoover opening up. Two really different scenarios. One is, my kids are moving to that neighboring school, so I'm going to move with them. So think Wood to Alexander, think Penn or Garner to Christine Grant. I think the Borlaug model, Roosevelt closed, Borlaug opened, it wasn't Roosevelt kids that went to Borlaug. Roosevelt kids went to Horn and Weber. Horn and Weber kids went to Borlaug. Same thing with Hoover. Hoover closes, Hoover kids don't go to New Hoover. Hoover kids go to Longfellow and Mann and Lemmy and Lucas, and then they, Lemmy, Lucas kids, they go to New Hoover. The reason I say that is because it's not uncommon when you have that Alexander model, that you have staff that want to follow kids. They would like to go with their their students that they've had in class. It's a little bit more problematic when you're doing that leapfrog, because there isn't that pull. And so staff's decision-making process about those openings is very different.
I did expect you to not be thinking of it.
Yeah. We've actually had some really long. Yeah, we've had some long-term discussions with the ICEA about that, just so that, from that standpoint, as we go through the staffing model, that it's done in a way that gives people plenty of time to think, lots of time to decide where they do and don't want to go. And then make sure that we've got plenty of time when we're done with that process, that when the the last domino drops, we're ready to do the posting for new hires in a timely manner that we normally would. So we kind of back into that whole staffing.
Kind of one piece.
Yeah.
Another thing we did with with Alexander was that we also put caps on the percentage of staff from any one school that could go to the new school, because we don't want to just be concerned about the new school that's opening up. We also want to be concerned about the staff and the kiddos that are remaining in other schools. And so we didn't want to set a scenario of where you just completely take a whole staff, and so then you're restaffing another building. And so we worked with Chris to say, we understand that you're pulling from these attendance areas. We need to make sure that we leave Joe and Wood with a with a staff that they can continue to build around too. And so we try to balance those pieces, not just the new schools, but where the staff's coming from, to make sure those stay, you know, growing and continuing to flourish as well.
When do we get capacity numbers for nineteen, twenty?
So I didn't put those in there. That's a good observation. I put the end of the FMP numbers in there, just so that I knew where we are going to. One of the reasons that we did that was, we knew that there were projects that were in play, and we were concerned that if we staffed for those, for where it was going to be next fall, that we might find ourselves in a year or two down the road with some buildings with a lot of excess capacity. Because we tried to right-size it for next year, when we really wanted to plan for right-sizing it for a year or two out when those projects got done. We can definitely show you that.
Is it easy for you to pull, I mean, include that number? I would just like to see where that number moves, or if it doesn't move, or how it progresses for some of our high-capacity schools this year, and looking at, once the FMP is done, that number's still pretty high, like for Borlaug.
Sure.
That's pretty high.
Yep, you can definitely do that.
How do I go? So for the community's sake, I gave Steve my questions ahead of time, so this is kind of a process of him just making public the questions that I ask. I do have some things I want to talk about too, but one thing I raised with Steve is I'm concerned about having Horn go over fifty percent in its FRL. It seems to me like if that's our district goal, I'm pretty understanding why we want to exceed it on purpose. And one option I then sort of tossing around in my head, what I asked you about, is the option of allowing those Westside Drive students, that many of whom are voluntary transferring into Horn, were moved in twenty seventeen to Weber. What would it look like if those students were allowed to just be assigned at Horn? What would that do to that fifty-one percent? Now, of course, that would mean that other students would not be able to go to Horn. So maybe that means fewer students coming out of Borlaug, for example. Maybe that means sending some students to Lincoln instead from Borlaug or somewhere else. But I ran the idea by folks in that community, just to see if they would like totally like go crazy with the entire idea of we changed it and now we change it back. And I got a mixed reaction. I was told that by far, by and large, the community, that neighborhood would would largely support that as long as they were given the option to stay at Weber if they wanted to. Because we did move them to Weber. And so now moving them back again would be, you know, two transitions. For, like I said, some of those kids, they never moved to start, but they're still at Horn anyway. So I am interested in seeing how many kids that would be. I could have looked up, I didn't do it, but I could have looked up the twenty sixteen documents to see what that building block was then. I don't think it's a lot of low SES there, so I think it would tend to lower the FRL at Horn. So Steve, you gave me some responses to that.
Yeah, and I'm sure I was taking some notes here. I'll find it. Oops, that's not the right one. Oops.
Do you want me to tell you what you said?
Yeah, if you want to, since I'm not, I printed the wrong one off, so that'd be a plus.
First of all, you said you would work with that and gather that building block data to 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 understand what those numbers would look like.
Right.
You also reiterated what I had in the lead as well, stated that, of course, that would be another round of disruption for those kids. Is that the right thing to do? You did also say that that was something you considered, and you decided not to do that because of the disruption. So I, the overall point being that I would like to see, none of our schools go over fifty percent on purpose. It just feels to me like, you know, we did a presentation that had on one whole slide, our goal is under fifty percent. And I feel a bit nervous about doing a jump over fifty on purpose. Anyway.
Yeah, I mean, I hear what you're saying. I guess for me, though, I'm not, it doesn't bother me as much, because it's a part of this bigger picture, where we're having bigger impact than other. So this jump up, and frankly, I, watching a school, you know, like Longfellow jump up. So so that, I think, is gonna be a bigger true impact for the school and the staff and the kids than this relatively small jump up, even though philosophically and policy-wise, it does get over that number. For me, as a part of the larger picture, it's worth it for now, knowing that we're just gonna continue to do work to, and knowing that at one point five percent, you know, that that could change. And this is one of those schools that could bump up and down and over across that line either way.
Looking at the capacity numbers for Horn, would would it one appropriate option to look at? And knowing where Lincoln is at right now, and knowing kind of the demographic tilt of the Horn attendance area, would it be appropriate for us to bring back a building block on the east side of Horn that we could move into Lincoln, which would help utilize those seats relatively close from a geographic standpoint? Would help create some space at Horn? Would also probably coupled with moving that group out and moving the other group in, see a magnified decrease in the socioeconomic status number for Horn? Would that be an appropriate option to bring back to look at?
I think honestly that'd be great, and if there's some attendance support busing, that some kids that are already on a bus. I don't think there's very many kids on that bus.
There aren't. Very slow.
You know, widen or hold it. I think that makes sense, since we've got extra seats at Lincoln. I'm also concerned, going up to fifty-one percent, in my mind, puts them at the tier-two level for a RAM school, which would mean that filling them at ninety-four percent, I'm rounding up, is not going to allow them to have the class sizes that they are supposed to be having as a tier-two school. So that just feels like a lot of pressure there. So I would support that idea of.
We'll we'll bring back a building block for you to take a look at, bring back the impact on both Lincoln and Horn. And Weber, because we'll have a domino there too.
And along with my concern for Horn, I asked for ELL numbers. And I said for all the proposals, but truth being told, what I really was interested in was the ELL numbers for Borlaug and Horn. Because I feel like those are areas where there's already a lot of ELL, and we're moving more in. So I don't know if the board is interested in having that data or not. I would like to, if you've got a goal around ELL, sometimes a school should have that as something.
So I did a little research. One of the things, the certification process for our ELL and our special ed students is a little different than the certification process for our regular students, so they are completing that right now. Due by the end of the month, there's a short reconciliation period, but they were hopeful that they could have our current numbers for us. Hopefully, the next time we're together, work session, if not, it would be shortly thereafter. So we should be able to have those pretty quick.
Exactly. Okay, another question that I raised of Steve was Longfellow's FRL jumping to forty-four percent. We still have that question of pairing out there, and Twain was is going to be, as proposed, at sixty-five, sixty-six percent, which paired puts them, I think, around fifty-ish. I am wondering if that's what we want to do. I know we haven't made a decision on pairing yet, but I do think we should view this in light of the fact that we haven't made a decision. The other thing is, is that Longfellow having this change in twenty nineteen, they will not have the support of the Twain staff yet, if we do end up pairing. So they will be making a very large jump without having other teachers to draw from to, you know, on their, with their team teaching. So I just put that out there.
That's my biggest concern. I really, that's my biggest concern with that big jump is is, you know, I know our teachers will do what we ask them to do. I know they'll do it really, really well, and I want to make sure they're. But I also know we don't know what we don't know. And so we will be asking teachers to go into a very different environment with a lot of uncertainty, like a lot, which is. And, you know, this year, you know, twenty-seven doesn't look as bad as, you know, last year's number, but it's still, that's a big, you know, you're almost doubling the number of kids. And if we do pair, now you're, it just feels like a lot of change for a school in potentially two years. You know, if we if we do this change and they go up to forty-four, and then the next year we pair, I think we're asking a lot more of that specific staff in the school than. And so I just worry about how that impacts the staff and the kids, and so that was my concern.
And no, I think it's fair, I think the teacher writing this and, you know, writing the building, but inside looking at the numbers, if if we make these changes as proposed, for me, the pairing of Longfellow could become less compelling because of the, and so for me, it changes some of the discussion, and there's a urgency on that. So I'm with you. I would not want to do this change and then pair in the next year. I mean, that would be way too much for those schools to manage. But of course, we can admit that from principals and staff and how management, that does feel like two each like changes in two years' time, that was close to me.
And just.
For reference, your combined FRL would be about fifty-two percent, given the given the the two attendance areas it's drafted right now.
I think the other thing to look at though too, Laura, is where else would we send those students? And right now, they're scheduled to go to Alexander. We could just make that situation worse. Right.
I personally think we've got options. The the mileage from Lakewood to Longfellow is not a short distance. The, the mileage from Lakewood to Longfellow is not a short distance, so...
Are you going to say Lincoln, right, probably?
That would be an option.
Right, and I think you'd be in the same boat then. You have a low FRL school, which will now go up, and you would have that same teacher situation.
One different thing with Lincoln, though, is they've been getting ready for the Forrest View kids, and that they've been actively planning on that change since, since 2016. So they've been, I mean, that's what the principal said, right? Now, we're ready for these kids. And I would still say, you know, but at least they're, they've done the work, they've preped, they've laid the groundwork, and those two populations are probably not that dissimilar. So that's the difference that Longfellow have, that we've really sprung this on them this year. And I think we felt some of that concern, you know, when we had them at the table, to some of that uncertainty, you know, and it felt pretty deep to me, that uncertainty.
But it was also really specific to the pairing discussion.
It, well, it was, yes.
And which one of the other factors was it?
Well, there's the other, yes, correct, correct, and that, this isn't the only piece of that, right. But that would be the difference with Lincoln, and they've been getting ready for the Forrest View kids. And I know, you know, because I think this is true for a lot of schools who, at least when I've talked to staff and principals who, frankly, I think all the time when I talk to principals, they want more diversity in their school, they sort of see that benefit. And so I know, you know, frankly, Lincoln's going to be really disappointed with the Forrest View kids, they're going to be done if they don't get that opportunity. And that, that could be one difference between those. And I know, and it's a big, we're talking about a big jump to kids, one hundred and fourteen kids, so it's not, it's, that moving to Lakewood, so, and I, I'm not for, I mean, I'd rather send them to Longfellow than Alexander or Twain, for sure, but...
So are we asking to see a different configuration, like versus Lincoln? I don't know, can we send them over to...
That's what would be in set, Longfellow.
Without Forrest View?
Without.
Because I think when you gave us the numbers before, it was inputting Forrest View. I don't know what kind of dumb note that's...
That's number, it doesn't have Forrest View. This number does.
It's like pulling four kids, you know, going down over time.
Yeah, I'm just saying that this number doesn't have Forrest View, but Lakewood, it quickly shoots faster than that capacity. Right?
So if I do that, though, I'm going to have a problem putting kids from Horn into Lincoln to make room for the students that are coming from K Drive back to Horn.
That's what I was wondering, was the dumb note that's...
Yeah.
And, and again, it's not that that staffing piece is insurmountable, but it's, I mean, that's a big, I mean, that's a, I mean, the truth is, it's two different jobs, and now we're going to ask teachers to do one job with a very different job, and, and I, it's just, you know, it's a concern.
You'll actually, just as a reference point, if you were to move the, if you were to move the Lakewood neighborhood into Lincoln, that would give you two hundred and seventy-two kids, who has room for two hundred and forty, so we'd be a hundred percent, a hundred-plus percent of capacity at Lincoln. I'd actually wind up needing to move some, what's that?
And we also don't know how many people might take up that voluntary transfer exception in Scam on Farms, because there's another sixty kids there.
True. I'd actually have to move somebody out of Lincoln if I want to move Lakewood in to make room for them.
Well, you have capacity at MAN, so if we needed to move someone out, there's capacity there, there's capacity at Schimick.
My own, I, I just, you know, my only caution is, as I'm trying to write notes here, is as you go through with this, we really have two choices as our next step. Our, we either go down the funnel and we narrow our choices, or we start going up the funnel and we start increasing our choices. So we can do either one, I just want you to recognize from a timeline standpoint, if we start looking at more options, it's going to take more time to get this in front of you. I think you're really going to struggle to get to an eleven-twenty-seven decision. So I just caution you with that, because I can tip a lot of dominos over, but I know that one point in time, we talked about trying to keep the number of building blocks that we were attaching and reattaching to other schools in the ten-ish range, I'm going to wind up tipping way over that when we start talking about that. We can do that.
Same, the same thing I've been saying to folks, because they've been asking questions, right, and particularly the ones who are saying, well, these numbers are still terrible, you're clearly not doing your job right, there's still huge disparities. And the answer is, much like I said before, too, we've, 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 too, is that this is a stepwise process, that, you know, we're trying to make changes now and then continue to reevaluate and make other changes as we move forward. So I, I, we are sitting here, there, there are a couple things that I think we can look at, that are, again, still small changes compared to the current twenty-nine-two boundaries, and I think we just need to look at those, and when we really start shuffling hundreds of kids around and knocking down twelve more dominos, I think that's trying to get to perfect and letting it get in the way of, you know, improvement, and that's, that's going to get us stuck, right? And I'd be leery to get too crazy with some of those changes, so I'd like to make sure that we're not, you know, really dumping all over the, the whole plan and starting from scratch, right? So I just want to have that in mind, and I think there are a couple things we can take a look at.
Yeah, absolutely.
For Amy, is it all the preparation of the school is a very big question, and so within this whole plan, and Longfellow, you adopted the proposal, and they have done this as much, what could we do, and should we have the time, or, you know, what are some ideas around the pairing?
So we talked about, just from Brady last week, everything kind of that meeting, what that might look like, because I was wondering a little bit about the kind of the, let me, or the smorgasbord of trainings that we already have as the current offerings to our staff, and are they talking about any more of that? Certainly, some buildings are in different rotation to receive some of that training, but I don't necessarily think that that was where Brady thought the conversation was headed. It was more about opportunities for teachers to migrate from one building to the next. And so, for example, since these kiddos are at, not always, they're playing right now, it would be plain staff meeting with Longfellow, that is something we would certainly orchestrate over the course of the spring, and maybe it's starting with their I L Ts or their building leadership to, to start there and see where we would need to go from there.
Yeah, I would say they said pretty firmly, don't just give us more trainings, that, you know, they, that was about collaboration, and, I mean, the ACES training was brought up, that might be a just a specific thing, but for the most part, it was like, do not ambush with more trainings and collaboration, meeting with families, things like that, that might...
I, because I think the problem, we're going to see this problem with a lot of our schools that have been very low, and as we continue to make these changes, if we're doing our job and making incremental changes, some of those will jump up pretty quickly in order for us to get some of our schools that have been sitting above seventy for years. So I'm with JP on understanding what our staff need, and not just training, but collaboration, because we've talked to some Twain teachers that are eager to ensure that their kiddos that they're sending have the support that they need in place, and wanting to share, hey, I'm willing to do this with Longfellow staff, and I think that's where we're, it's not ideal to all of a sudden present a new population, but we have some amazing teachers, and right now, I'm going to see a Longfellow that's willing to step up to that challenge, knowing that this is a domino process, we're building on it, and they, I think, are probably, from what I'm hearing, some of them are encouraged by this in hopes that then pairing may not be as necessary, because that's what they are adamantly against.
So my only caveat to you would be, we can make anything work, but if we can kind of narrow the scope, so kind of in that, looking at some of those choices that we had up there, do we want to try Lakewood at Lincoln, or do we want to create room for the K Drive folks at Horn and backfill Lincoln with some of the Horn kids? I mean, we can, we can kind of do, well, like a one or the other type of thing, I can do scenarios for both, but like I said, my concern is, if we're going to try to get to a decision on November twenty-seventh, the more options that we have in front of us, the harder they are, I think, to process through, and then they start tipping lots of other dominos over. So we can make either one of those work, I think we should pick one of those.
I agree with you, it'd be good to just pick one of those, too, because if we're looking at filling Lincoln, I mean, something that I already raised is I'm concerned about not, at Lincoln not having students.
Right.
They, they don't have a source of students that are going to be coming in. I had another idea for Lincoln, too, that I could put out there, if, if, you know, we have a third idea, you'll probably all say no, but another idea I had for Lincoln to try and give them more students is to give them the growth areas in Coralville Central that are not yet built.
Mm-hmm.
So the Bridgewater area, the Iroquois Landing area.
Yeah.
Those are currently, are going to be assigned to Wickham, but Coralville Central, as it stands, capacity's right on.
Yeah.
When you add Bridgewater and I R L, that's where you go over.
That east side of Coralville Central, that area kind of north of the peninsula there, and then the area at Green Little Triangle on Borlog, and then the east part of, of the old Roosevelt and Horn, those were the areas that, when Adam and I looked at these numbers after we moved Forrest View out, we started playing with those, saying, where could you move kids in that would start to right-size Lincoln?
And, and the benefit of both that plan and the Lakewood plan would be that they are solid sources of kids, they're not going away. In fact, Bridgewater's going to only go up, and that's what Lincoln needs, is they need a solid group of kids that are not going away.
Yeah, and if you, and that, that former Roosevelt neighborhood on the east side of Horn's also a pretty stable student population, so I think that'd be, as you look at them, I think that's another, might be another area of opportunity, too.
So I don't know how many kids are in that area?
I don't either, off the top of my head. I know we were starting to look at it, but I also said we're not drawing anything up because that's not part of the directions we've been given, and that winds up with too many blocks, so we didn't even, all we did was just look at it on the screen.
Those two areas that I mentioned in Coralville Central are adjacent to Lincoln already, so that would just be drawing lines a little bit.
Yeah, we looked at, sorry, I should do this. For those people from a geographic standpoint, those areas that we're talking about, if you're not looking at this area here, and saying, over here, over here, 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 what does that look like?
So back to the, is it sixty kids that potentially could stay at Lincoln as part of the Scam on Farms exception? Is that a big enough number?
Yeah.
And that's not counted in this document?
That is not.
We don't, we can create options, that's on slide, or slide.
It's one of the old presentations.
I'd rather not plan on, on kids, because we can always, I mean, don't we have the option to deny if there is any space?
Um, we didn't put a denial on the grandfathered kids, we put a denial on the exception kids.
Well, it's, it's an unknown, I mean, what we're trying to do with this policy is to get rid of the unknowns.
Right.
So if we build another plan around an unknown, we're kind of going backwards.
Yeah, well, and the other thing is, we really built those grandfathers to expire, right? We want those kids to age out of the system, so the long term is they're gone.
Is the area that you're talking about more future growth as opposed to next year?
Some of it is.
Bridgewater and I R L?
Yeah.
Yes, that play, that area is not built up yet, it's in the process, but it's...
If you've got kids staying there with the grandfather again, and then you've got growth coming in somewhere, it might slowly bounce it out and not completely...
Yeah, that's a very good point, I hadn't considered that yet, that makes a lot of sense. Because it's, Coralville Central and the plan that you've proposed here is really that those two areas that are putting Coralville Central over capacity.
Yep.
And if you took them out...
Yeah, and that's why, that's one of the reasons why we, even though it's not a lot of kids, we grabbed that area south of Oakdale with the idea that it would at least provide some immediate relief for Coralville Central. So this would provide, this would definitely prevent future overcrowding from that development.
Yeah, taking out those areas.
Yep, yeah.
So I, I mean, for myself, I'm okay with looking at that plan, since it seems like some folks are very opposed to Lakewood, I mean, that's what I'm hearing from you. I don't know if there's a free capacity question, but we're on our own, and it's what I heard.
Yeah, we probably, if we, if we looked at Lakewood in there, I'd probably have to go back and look at pulling the whole peninsula out and moving that, just to make sure that I...
As the people have suggested, and it has some merit, right?
Oh, yeah.
But it's, it is very much yanking the rug out for a whole lot bigger number.
And it moves those seats, though, I mean, MAN's going to have forty less kids in a couple of years, so they're going to be going less than they are. So they need a source of kids, too.
I don't, most of the folks at MAN would, have all said they want to keep the entire peninsula, they were happy that we talked about it, but it sounds like they don't want to keep it, it's just, you know, that isn't done, but they're doing, right, and we're talking about expectation.
It sounds like there's, potentially, quite a bit of mileage to bring Horn down, so we don't go over fifty, that's a tweak, and then that one at Lincoln. And then, you know, we pull the rug out, Longfellow, and we do that, we rip the bandit off, and we move forward, and our Twain staff over there.
Yeah, because if you're taking Lakewood out, that's a hundred and forty-four kids out, but you're not, going to be, now you're down to three hundred students in that school, which is very, that's way down, that's less than they have now, a hundred and ninety-two kids less than they have now.
Which if we were going into a pairing scenario, wouldn't be all that?
Well, yes and no.
I mean, we haven't made that decision, but...
Yeah, if you're looking at pairing Twain, and you're that low, and Twain's at sixty-eight percent, now you've got two schools that are super low in capacity.
Except that we did say we wanted to potentially keep the RAM staffing that Twain has. I'm, I'm not going to, you know, go back and word that, but I, you know, what, what, we've talked about some options here, so I think we have some things to consider. The feedback I received from Coralville Central is that they have invested a lot of time and resources in that Valley View area, and the fact that they are only changing Wickham's percentage by one point, what I'm hearing from Coralville Central is that that seems like a lot of disruption for one percentage point.
We looked at it more from a capacity standpoint at Coralville Central, we were really, and again, keep in mind, that wasn't looking at moving that east, potentially going to be developed area, out of Coralville Central, so we had looked at Coralville Central at being a hundred and one percent capacity now, and we're really trying to push schools, especially depending on how staffing looks for them, down to ninety percent. And so that was a, it was more capacity than socioeconomic status from a move standpoint, we're really trying to move some bodies out of Coralville Central and into Wickham, so we picked that area that was immediately adjacent to the Wick, to Wickham, south of it. We could have gone west, too, and moved some of those students in, that's certainly a possibility, maybe as we're looking at some of the change now, we could go back and look at that. That was, that was part of that rationale. I know that if you go further west...
And I'll just say, if you did that, you aren't going to change the FRL at all.
That's, we, we tried it.
You're not going to, it's potentially going to go down.
Yeah, you're not, it was pretty flat, was what it did, which, I mean, one percent...
So it would not accomplish our equity goals, which I would then say, why are we disrupting kids if it's not accomplishing our goals?
Well, and especially if we were to look at saying, we're going to move some students from the east side of Coralville into Lincoln, then we would create the space that we were trying to do when we were moving those students into Wickham. So if that was the case, back out that building block, south of Oakdale, because you wouldn't need those forty students to move to Wickham to create the space at Coralville Central.
You know, at Longfellow, when you have that huge jump, you're going to get some support, but at Wickham, I mean, not that we wouldn't support, but, you know, the one percentage jump isn't going to draw any attention, and then, but those forty kids are probably getting a lot of support.
They're getting a lot of support, yeah.
And that might not translate as, they could get lost in shuffle easier, I think, than the cohort of a hundred and fourteen kids from Lincoln. That's not going to get lost. Does that make sense?
Yeah, and, and, you know, I, I know I'm making the dominos fall here, but then it leaves seats open at Wickham, so I was thinking, okay, well, what could happen there? I've heard people talking about feeling like Wickham isn't getting enough change here, I've heard that in the community, and if Boston Way might instead to Wickham, we got an email about that from a parent, I thought she had some good points, I'm not married to the idea, but I thought she had some good points. I would be interested to know, would that change the number at Wickham? I would be interested to know, would that change the number at Wickham more than one percent?
It would, and it would put them at about ninety, I'm guessing ninety-five, ninety, actually, yeah, it might be ninety-six, ninety-seven percent capacity, which Amy's gonna have some significant issues with because that doesn't take into account our low incidence, high need special ed programs that are in there right now.
So, maybe there's, maybe that's not the right group then.
Yeah.
But maybe there's a different chunk of Kirkwood that could go, that's further from Kirkwood. I don't want to draw kids that are a block or two from Kirkwood.
Sure.
But close, I was looking at the map today, and close to Boston Way, there's another kind of defined area there. It's by the mall, sort of, there's some.
Between Boston Way and twelfth?
Well, that's going all the way over to their boundary, so it wouldn't be nearly that far.
Okay.
I don't know what's, what the streets are, but do you know what I mean?
Are you talking about, like, fourteenth, twelve, fourteenth street?
Oh, so come in a little bit. Yeah.
Yeah, so fourteenth up towards the mall, that little corner.
If we could get some change at Wickham that's more than one percent, I think that would be our ideal.
To be honest with you, we probably won't see that big a change just because we probably don't have that many kids up there to move in. And that N at Wickham is gonna be our big problem because you've got four hundred and forty-four kids there. So, I think that you'd see a change, but you're not gonna see a very big change just because. Yeah, exactly. You're gonna, you're, you, you might be pressed to see another one percent.
And maybe that's not the right move, and I'm just throwing things out there. I will say that we're apparently okay with having capacity in the sixties at some other schools. So, Wickham is also a very low FRL school that would be under utilizing capacity in that case.
Yeah, remember, so Wickham right now shows seventy-seven percent. And I know that one of the challenges, this is, this is presuming that all classrooms are used for regular ed instruction. And I know if you go down the team four hallway, you're gonna find three high need special ed rooms that probably don't have fifteen kids total in them. So, I think that's, that was the point you raised earlier, which we'll work on, which is, what is, what is, I don't even know what you call it. What is fire code capacity and what is use capacity? Because I think your use capacity at Wickham is probably actually a lot smaller than the five seventy-five.
Then in that case, they don't need to have that many students out of.
No, that's, see, that's where I, that's where I think we have a challenge is, is if we want to push that number, that low SES number up, we need to add a lot of kids or move some kids out. But we need to, in order to really make that number change, because that N is so big at four forty-four. But then, in order to create space, or in, in order to accommodate that many kids, we're gonna be challenged to find room for our special ed programs. So, now, if we gotta move kids out, where do we move them? And that, that's part of that set of dominos that winds up. Wickham, Wickham and Grant, to be honest with you, I haven't figured out what the solution is for Wickham and Grant.
And it may be, we talked about this being an all-year iterative set of activities, maybe we just can't tackle this. We just can't get through this yet. When the time comes that we have.
And Penn's a problem too, to be honest with you. That's gonna be an even bigger problem long-term because if you think about that big pink area there, as that grows out, that's not gonna be low SES numbers. So, I think you're gonna see that Penn number, which is nine and a half percent, I think you're gonna see that go down. Because if you think about all that growth that's going on on North Liberty right now, on both sides of the street, and you see where they're grading property out there and bulldozing forties. I, I'm, I'm far more concerned about that right now in terms of where that number goes two, three years from now than where that Wickham number goes. That's gonna be a problem for us.
So, maybe then the least dominos, the least disruption for the students would be to take those new areas that aren't populated yet. They're not disrupting any students. Hey, send them to Lincoln.
Yeah.
Keep the Coralville Central, Valley View area at Coralville Central, because they're not changing much at Wickham.
Oh, yeah, that group, yeah.
Because it, yeah.
And I might look at that, that corner of Borlaug and that east side of Horn too, to free up some of those seats for the K-Drive kids.
What's driving the six percent drop at Coralville Central?
It's twofold. It's, it's, it's moving that small group that's south of Oakdale out, and it's also the voluntary transfer.
They have a lot of FRL voluntary transfer in to Coralville Central right now.
Yep. Yeah, they have, they have, their ins are, are low SES and their outs are high SES. So, they get a double hit for it. So, when you, the new voluntary transfer process keeps the high SES in, prevents the low SES from transferring in, so you see a twofold change in those numbers. Plus then, that small group south of Oakdale that we moved out also, we saw some incremental change with that. So, moving, moving the Oakdale group back in won't have an enormous impact on it. And then moving some of that green space on the east side will create future room for them. We'll move some kids out too, but it won't be a huge number.
So, you're gonna come back with that proposal and see that at the community session next Tuesday?
We will see if we can get that done for Tuesday.
So, that's the. I think it's fair to show what we have.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, okay. But I mean, we just need to be transparent. This is something that's under the strain.
I think, I think you can definitely talk to them about that, but we'll see what we can do.
Okay.
Definitely for that following week.
This is like affecting Horn, getting them under fifty, filling up Lincoln a little bit, and then just switching it around to Coralville Central from the Valley View kids.
Might give us a little space at Borlaug too, which I know was something that you'd expressed as a concern. So, I think we'll look for a little bit of space at Borlaug, so there's a little bit of relief, a little bit of space at Coralville Central. So, there's a little relief, but also adding back the south of Oakdale kids. So, they come back in, then we'll probably look at an even number of kids maybe going out as we look at the east side. And definitely those high capacity development areas that are out there and move those into Lincoln. We'll look at that corner of Borlaug, look at that east side of Horn, and do some numbers on those to see what we can do about getting Lincoln, Lincoln's numbers looking better on all metrics.
The one point I would be concerned with, the Ed rep, that's a small number, I guess, but like, you know, that whatever you're retaining there at Coralville Central then, like, you're gonna put those numbers, both the SES numbers and the capacity numbers similar to what you're seeing here at Horn that we're saying is not good, right?
They're there though. That's the thing. Is they're there today, their kids are there, you know, so it's not a change in them at all?
I get that. I totally get that as a benefit, but you're talking about probably pushing the capacity over ninety percent again. And this school is gonna be pushing fifty percent on SES, so.
We're gonna try.
Back towards the other way.
But he's talking about moving some.
Yeah. I think we're gonna try to move some students on the east side of Coralville over to Lincoln, so.
Perhaps some FRL.
Yeah. I don't know what that demographic looks like over there because it's a little scattered. But we'll, part of it is, we try to look at streets too while we're in there. So, if you give us a little bit of time, I'll see what I can pull out for a building block. I'll look for a building block that's, to be honest with you, I'll, I'll try to find a building block that's interchangeable with the one that's south of Oakdale. I'll look for the same demographics, same kind of numbers, creates the same kind of space. But then also with the foresight that we're gonna take some of that soon-to-be-developed green space over there and move that into Lincoln, so that's not going to cause problems for Coralville Central in the future.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Yeah. Because that was really the tipping point, is that development that hasn't happened yet.
Right.
Was gonna, took them way over.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I'm working through my list here, folks. I think we've already covered most of my other questions through our conversation. I shared with, and again, I'm doing this for the record so the community can know what Steve told me. I shared with him that I feel like there's not enough of a drop in the highest FRL schools. His response to me, do you want me to answer for you, Steve, or do you?
Go ahead. Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. Is that we're continuing with the neighborhood school philosophy. We want students to be able to attend the school in their immediate vicinity. And so, what we're trying to do is more so right-size these high FRL schools so that they can accommodate their smaller class sizes. And that we also can continue to look at the pairing and magnet options. Continuing to walk through as we get the enrollment numbers and, I mean, again, this is an iterative process. We move our way through year after year after year.
So, really, when we looked at the, you know, the charge was to look around the edges, right? And see where we could make some changes to the boundaries for nineteen, twenty. And we started with our highest need schools and said, given the class sizes that we know are in there and the number of rooms that are available, what would be the right number of students to put in there? Jason's back here. What would be the right number of students to actually have a library? That doesn't have an ELL classroom and all your Title I, Reader Recovery, and everything else that's trying to live inside your library in there and actually have your library back? So, what would it, what would it take for us to right-size Twain, to right-size Alexander, to right-size Wood? And then, once we'd done that, then we had students that needed to go somewhere. So, then we looked, using that neighborhood school philosophy, where would be the next closest location? So, I'll give you the, the Wood discussion that we had. We looked at Bon Air, and we looked at the neighborhood that's just to the right of Bon Air, to the east of Bon Air. And we looked at the travel patterns, and we said, it's actually because of how you get to Wood, it's actually, the driving distance to New Hoover is not significantly different than the driving distance to Wood. So, we said, we right-size Wood, these students are displaced, we're gonna move them to New Hoover. So, that was the iterative process that we went through to try to take the building blocks that you'd given us and figured out where do they fit best, was to try to do what we could for our highest need buildings first. And then, once we'd done that, then to look right down the chain, our medium needs buildings and our low needs buildings. And we didn't have any answers for you when it came to the Penn-Wickham-Grant conundrum.
And I think it would be fair for it to say that I think probably none of us are satisfied with River Landing for this first iteration, that we still have lots of high SES schools and lots of much lower SES schools. But it's better, and we're addressing some of the capacity questions that will come in between, more hardships and things to work around. So, I think, I think we still have any challenge in front of us, and I think it's important to continue to focus on that and to illustrate with Stephen as well.
I think one of the things that we were most struck by as we looked at this was there, if you look from a historical standpoint, there are fewer low socioeconomic status students in our north corridor buildings now than there were five or ten years ago. And if that trend continues, we'll really struggle with those five northernmost buildings to create any kind of balance because there is no, there's no building block that is contiguous to those schools that we can change. And we, we made those little tiny tweaks at, at when we opened Grant up, and the gain or loss was in the two percent range. That was the best we could do to try to balance the neighborhoods between Penn and Grant and Garner. There, there just, there are not a lot of kids up there that get us to that point.
I think this is almost, I mean, obviously, there's, and we're still making these little tweaks, but this is almost as good as we can do if we're gonna have neighborhood schools.
That's the challenge.
In that place, which then, that means, well, then what's next? And it's, you know, what are you gonna do for hills other than a magnitude period? Or, you know, some way, and, and how are you going to draw people from North Liberty to want to go to these other schools? Because it's the only way it's gonna happen, other than mass busing and idle weird Jerry, you know, that kind of stuff, but.
We couldn't even gerrymander schools.
Yeah, well.
I mean, to be honest with you, we tried that. There's, there's no way to do it.
And he doesn't support it, and it's expensive, and.
Yeah. So, so that's a long-term boulder that we're gonna have to roll uphill, and I, I don't have an answer for you on that one. I don't know.
I mean, I'll be honest, I think that the answer is to have people choose something different. And we need to come up with what that, and that's the idea tonight. So, I think that's the next. Because I'll, I would bet a little bit of money that if you put a year-round school somewhere, you have people driving from all corners of the district to go. I haven't talked to anybody who's like, never from me and my children. They're always like, wait.
Sign me up, Jim.
Sign me up. So, I, I mean, I just think we're at that point where we've sort of tweaked enough, or tweaked quite a bit. But then I think, you know, the other thing, I think, is we've set a precedent for this building block idea, and then as data comes forward, it comes up, you know, maybe that's what we do, sort of moving it forward, is more building block type of stuff with boundaries rather than redesigning the whole district.
Oh, Adam, I tried that too.
Any other questions or, I think, the board members have? We've got a couple of things, Steve, that we want to know.
Yes.
Talk about them at, since I just came in, decide we go with one.
Outreach, I think.
That's on Tuesday. I will volunteer to go to northwest.
I will volunteer to go to southeast.
Okay, so, let's go to northwest, northwest. I have a question for southeast too.
Southeast, southeast.
Phil, you too, you're east side too.
You do, you're gonna decide where.
Right, who is the opening?
Yeah, you're gonna decide where Kim goes.
You can go hang out at our central, like, so.
I'll let it hang.
I have to know.
I will be at one of them.
We have to know, because we have to record. I can't be in two places at once, sorry.
Let's see, what, what day of the week at that?
Tuesday.
Tuesday.
Tuesday next week?
So, Kim, you're at northwest. There'll be a board meeting for that session. And then the three of us are in the.
Don't worry.
We can get recorded.
Never know what somebody went through.
Well.
But it's not, it's not an official board meeting. And so, what else?
So, you will not have to, at southeast, you will not have to call to order.
So, we can just go in and start calling?
Yes.
So, do we want to have a similar approach at both cases? Do we kind of know? Well, we did lessons as well. I mean, the sort of table, perhaps, with the board members straight out, we can remember, just go and sat, and then take notes, and. I thought it was a good idea.
I, I guess I'm referring more to what information we're giving there.
Ah, got it.
There's a lot more stuff in these building blocks than there is two pages of.
I just want to make sure everybody's getting the same information both sides of town.
I think it needs to be.
I'd suggest you probably take the presentation, and we'll print out copies and have that available for you at the table.
And I would appreciate a short written summary of the thing that we're working on, that we probably won't have whole presentation purposes to change the shifts that we just.
A short written summary.
We might three days.
I'll give that a shot.
Because I will not be able to remember that by.
It's shorter than one piece.
So, at southeast, I mean, I know where, where Kim will be, will we have any other ministry?
Yes.
I'll be at southeast.
Matthew will be at southeast, and Amy will be in northwest.
So, we will be person.
Can you also make just this?
No, I won't fail any.
Oh, yeah. Like, big enough to read?
Well, yeah, so that we can access it other.
And if you could also just print it out that that itself is, is one page, and it'd be a little.
I would be.
We can do that.
Lori has, has one that she blew up, and it's.
Amy would like one too. She, she can read.
That would be great. Oh, I'm sorry. Another question about Tuesday. Have, I'm assuming communication has gone out.
Yes.
There's some stuff on Facebook.
Okay.
And there's a press release, and it's going out from building principals to, yeah.
Okay.
We did only send it to the elementary parents only because we just didn't want to confuse secondary parents about that. But they'll be, they'll be, they'll see it through the press release, and it's on the website, so they'll, they will see it. They just didn't get a phone. What's that? We actually had the, we had the call come from the principals.
Oh, so you're planning.
Yeah, that, that would be, or that, was it an email? I can't remember what we decided.
I got an email. There's a call, because I'm at home.
Yeah. We decided that hopefully coming from the, sometimes when it comes from the central office versus coming from the principal, it doesn't, it's not as resonant with the parents.
Sorry, I don't listen as much. Sorry.
Yeah, I...
This is my principal.
I get that. I get that. Like Ruthina said, where's John Bacon's voice? Yeah. Yeah, we, we had it come from the principals.
And you think that, uh, sometimes people miss all the other avenues?
Houston?
Except for when it comes rings. Or they get the text.
The second...
I was gonna say, will you take the lead at northwest and call me in the order and make sure you...
Sure, I can do that, yeah.
And the second meeting is at southeast, right?
Yes.
Yes. Oh, the, November eighth. Yes, November eighth is at southeast.
I feel good about my decision, so we have an official one at northwest, and then the next one is at southeast.
Yes.
All right, anything else we need to cover tonight?
So Matt, Mr. Matt's decision.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
All right, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Matt.